Okay, we will start. So I wanted to introduce myself, I'm Dave Boni and this is the selectman in your line, this is Gary White and I'm the administrator Brad and I'll be handing the meeting over to moderator Danny Touget. And I just wanted to welcome you all to the air and yesterday we voted on Article 2 and 3. Article 2 was to select an assessor known as Bureau of the Fourth and sixty-seven votes were cast and Gary White received sixty and we had seven write-ins and I believe Gary's term is good until 2022. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to enact cost sharing policies through the end of the year, terminating the new year withdrawal process, then it's been a town vote committee. Again, we had sixty-seven votes cast and yes, with fifty and no with seventeen. Then with that, I'll hand the meeting over to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Boni.
You're very welcome.
Thank you folks for having me again and so as usual, just a couple of houses, things I go over and that is that I'll be using the main moderator's manual as a guide. If you speak once, others that have not spoken have an option to speak before you get to speak at the end. All right, please direct all questions to myself and then I'll, if I can't answer it, I'll throw it or jump out. It's very important to keep your comments relative to the motion that's on the floor and please refrain from making negative motions. And lastly, just please be courteous and refrain from side conversations because that is very unnerving to the person who has the floor if they're trying to say stuff, say things in the side conversations. Other than that, if there's no questions or comments, I'll get right into it and I think we're going to start with Article 4 today. That is to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for administrative service hours. May I have a motion?
I want the $315,800 to be appropriated or approved.
Second.
A motion and a second for $315,800. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. Okay, motion carries. Article 5, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for ambulance service. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $10,840.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second for $10,840. Questions, comments? Seeing none.
Who's providing that service?
We, Michael Carr.
Right now, we're still with Medicaid.
And how does the more local service compare to cost to this, to that one service?
We don't really, we've never gotten a real cost at a local level. It's not aware of it, I don't think that they would. We wouldn't have the same service if we went with Befol. Befol has paramedics on during the day where Medicaid has paramedics on twenty-four hours. So with Medicaid, we have paramedic company twenty-four hours a day with Befol if they saw a shooting, if we chose them, which I'm not sure. We really can because of our comment that did Medicaid, but we wouldn't have the same type of coverage that we have now.
Okay, and I have another request. If I might have a motion to have allow non-residents to speak and I don't know if you want to keep it to this particular item or just for the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
We're allowed to speak anytime, on any subject.
Is this any or any others like for?
Let's stick with our town for the first.
Okay, for everybody, yeah, that's good. And that's a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, I mean two-thirds. Okay, I have it. So thank you. And do you want to say something for this?
Sure, so we did contact Befol and ask them about, yeah, we contacted Befol, we contacted Case when our interlocal agreement was up last year and when we read through the three amended interlocal agreements, it's pretty clear we would have to pay back our portion of debt service on the, on the new building, which is, you have probably forty, fifty thousand dollars just to get out of the ambulance interlocal agreement contract. So when I brought that to the board, it really didn't make sense when I spoke with Befol, they were not super, super for the concept at this point because there was not a, they didn't, they didn't have the same level of service that Medicaid provides and Case wouldn't give us a cost estimate at all because they knew that we'd have to pay off the debt associated with the new building and didn't feel like, it was like, it was probably not going to happen. So we did look into it, that was.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I see some in the back maybe? Does he have a question? Your second. Okay, I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 6, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for our assessors' expense. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $9,550.
You have a motion and a second for $9,550. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 7, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for cemetery maintenance.
Vote $10,500, Article 7.
Second.
A motion and a second for $10,500. Questions? Yes.
Is that the money for the flags that are, that's under Article 9?
That's under Article 9, it's flags for veterans, there's one flags for veterans.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 8, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for community boards.
I want the chairman to raise $18,500.
Okay, a motion and a second for $18,500. Questions, comments? Yeah, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 9, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for community assistance. The recommendation is $40,589 for all of those. We have a motion.
Will we raise the money?
Okay, $40,589, if there's on the floor, a motion? Can I have a second? Questions, comments? Yes.
I just have a question, the $40,589, is that in line with what you're operating?
Um, last year, it was just over fifty-one, right?
Last, last year, last year, a little less, like six hundred or seven hundred dollars less than what we did last year. But in general, yeah.
These are all third-party requests that people send to the town and ask if we raise the money. They have a motion down here.
I'll tell you, we have, we have some people from out of town who would like to speak to some of these articles, some of these organizations in the list.
Yeah, sure.
We have a vote too.
Yeah, I'll take another motion to allow non-residents to speak on this.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, so just me, two-thirds vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, would somebody like to speak on that, from out of town?
Not that far away. I'm Dave Boni, I'm here just to let you know that we're discussing $700, but for that money, we've actually given $34,251 in direct service to residents of Newbury in the past year, in the past fiscal year, and that money is for twelve residents. We're happy to assist more people and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What is Community Concepts?
Community Concepts is an organization that offers low, if, heating oil for people who are low income, we offer Head Start for children, we have a variety of services, actually twenty-nine services, and we cover Franklin, Oxford, Andrew's Pocket, and Stone and Color in town, depending on what our services are.
Thank you. Any other questions on that or anything else on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Article 10, to see what, to see if the town will vote for appropriate money received from the cable franchise agreement to western main access television channel eleven, may I have a motion?
I want it passed.
Okay, I have a motion?
Second.
And a second to pass this and questions, comments?
It's not Channel 11 anymore.
Oh, okay.
Thirteen something, right?
Or what?
Thirteen hundred.
We're on TV.
What TV?
Thirteen hundred and something.
I don't know what I'm on, but.
Or you're on the diet.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, a vote, motion carries. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to override the selection of the value of appropriate from unappropriate surplus, the sum of not more than $2,000 to be used as a deemed advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during the calendar year 2018, 2019. May I have a motion? So, move. Have a motion and a second, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 12, if the town will vote to use the overlay abatements on taxes, may I have a motion? So, move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on Article 12. Questions, comments? Yes.
Is this written properly? Is it overlay abatements or is it, are we using the abatements to pay, or are we using overlay to pay the abatements, pay for abatements?
Yeah, I, I, how do you use it, overlay to pay for abatement should abatement on taxes come before the four assessors?
Yep.
But they aren't overlay abatements.
Do you?
They're abatements on taxes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, good clarification. Anything else? Did you have a, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for the green common units, may I have a motion?
Will we raise $8,400?
Sorry.
You have a motion and a second, Article 13, for $8,400. Questions, comments? Get it out back here first, yeah?
I can't, the maintenance is needed.
Is that David's question?
Well, we're hoping to, going to repair the basement windows, they took a hit from this much following smell this winter, and some painting and some generator protection from protection around the generator.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 14, see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for highways and bridges. May I have a motion?
Will we raise the $192,470?
Okay, you have a motion and a second for $192,470. Questions, comments?
What are we going to spend? Urban use? Or is it, you have things laid out and you're planning on some days?
We'll go towards the winter maintenance, plowing, and sand purchasing, cracks, ceiling of our road, road striping, miscellaneous repairs, and hopefully some ditching on Sunday River Road before Monkey Brook Road, between Monkey Brook Road and Colony Park entrance. Colony is up, if you like that.
Okay, was question back there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, you guys are great on, great track. Other questions, comments?
This one's, this one's the regular, they don't stop in the capital, the capital one comes next, yeah.
Where it's going.
Do you know where the question is?
Okay, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 15, see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for capital improvement, i.e. road paving. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $205,000.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for $205,000. Questions, comments? Yes.
What's being paid?
Pardon me, what's being paid?
Franch road.
Franch road? Other questions, comments?
That's it.
But that's, that's all of franches.
That's all of franches.
It puts us, should put us in pretty good shape with roads because maybe you know we spent some money on roads the past few years, so.
We're hoping to widen the entrance, do a little bit of bump repair and a small amount of it.
On franches, though?
Yes. Be included with, yeah.
Is it, is it branch work on it? No.
I'll set on that. Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 16, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for the purpose of paying fees or charges required for membership in the municipal association property and added fee risk group and other town insurance costs. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $17,982.
Second. Have a motion and a second for $107,982. Questions, comments? Yes.
I'm sure that that goes up at the yearly, how much was that last year? Was that going up?
So the significant increase in this is because we're planning to change the assistant position from a part-time to a full-time position and we have the budget for the cost of adding insurance, health insurance for that. The hope is that depending on what type of insurance that person takes, we may not need to budget for a family plan every year, but I have to, I have to budget for it in case they need a family.
Thank you. That answer your question okay?
Can you give me a ballpark, figure out how much more that was than last year?
Yeah, what was the question?
So there was eight percent increase in insurances, so overlapped here and I believe that it was like twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollar difference.
All right, well, thank you. That includes the eight percent then?
Yeah.
Not just the back of the shelf, okay. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, vote, motion carries. Article 17, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for debt service. May I have a motion?
I want $176,100 under Article 17.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for $176,100. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 18, to see if the town will raise inappropriate $500 to pay fees for newer kids participating in recreation. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $500.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for $500 on Article 18. Questions, comments? Okay, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 19, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for operation and maintenance of the municipal building. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $17,650 or $17,500.
Okay.
Second.
Have a sec, motion and a second for $17,500 for Article 19. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Motion carries. Article 20, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for operation and maintenance of the fire department. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $85,178.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second for $85,178 on Article 20. Questions, comments? Yes.
Yeah, how much, what are we giving for? Is that $85,000?
$85,178, what does, what does that provide to the town?
I think it lies supplies.
Yeah, Case for salaries, stipends, equipment for the fire department was budgeted for $11,943. Operations and maintenance, I don't know, operations and maintenance tallies to $30,735. Training, $1,000. Gas for the fire trucks, another $2,000. Electricity, heat and phone tallies up to $9,500 for both buildings.
Thank you.
What was the, is that in line with cost last year?
Oh, questions?
Yeah, it's up. It's up, close to $15,000.
Other questions, comments? Your second. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Yeah, motion carries. See, Article 21, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for sanitation to pay all fees and membership charges for tri-town solid waste. Do you have a motion?
Will we raise the $151,700?
Second.
You have a motion and a second for $151,700. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 22, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for streetlights. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $1,550.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for $1,500. Questions, comments? I think I saw you go first, yes.
My ball burted out with mine on my grad, I have a new one?
It's in the grad.
I actually pay for electricity now like this, all I need is a ball.
Is that anything to do with the town?
No, it's just making sure.
Okay, you got it.
Is there still two streetlights or?
I don't know. I think there are six of them. I have contacted, made contact with CMP to see if we can get LED lights, maybe drop it down a little bit, but I haven't heard back from them because I have made, made some inquiries.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. Article 23, shall the town authorize a selectman to carry forward unexpendable balances as they deem necessary, all of her unexpendable balances to last to the fund balance? May I have a motion? Regarding Article 23.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, according to Article 23. Questions? Yes.
Yes, how do we, physical that category of being, how do we?
So, the cemetery, for sure, and then if we have any projects that weren't able to be finished in this fiscal year, I would go to the board and ask them to carry forward those funds, but we're specifically asking for the cemetery this year. If we do have funds left over in the sanitation department, then I'd probably ask to have those hold forward so that if we ever get a situation where we don't budget for enough trash, then we can use that instead of using an designated fund out.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article 24, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for digitizing common newly attached maps and revising the paper maps. Do you have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $22,500.
Second. Have a motion and a second for $21,500. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 25, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for the Sunday River School House account. Do you have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $500.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for $1,000, Article 25. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article 26, to see what action the town is just to take regarding allowing the selectmen to spend up to ten percent of the capital inclusion account without seeking prior town approval. Do you have a motion?
Move Art. 56.
Have a motion and a second on Article 26. Questions, comments? Yes.
How much money does that represent, what's ten percent of the question?
Maybe $25,000?
$2,500.
Ten percent of difference.
Yes, $2,500. Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Yeah, vote, motion carries. Article 27, to see if the town will allow the selectmen to sell a stone to any fellow property with the value of not more than $2,000 under such terms and conditions they deem advisable. Do you have a motion?
I'll pass the article.
Yeah, a motion and a second for Article 27. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to fund the following capital reserve accounts with undesignated reserve funds. The town buildings reserve fund, $51,400, and the revaluation reserve fund for $50,000. Do you have a motion? So.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on Article 28. Questions? Yes.
Are these new accounts being set up this year or are we just popping them up?
We set them up last year.
And they have money in the ballot, the money turns forward, right?
Right, there is money in the revaluation reserve fund and we utilize the money in the town building reserve fund for the shower downstairs here and for the generator at the town office, the frame generator at the town office. That's what we used the money for last year.
Revaluation is two years away, so, right?
So hopefully this time next year, we'll be going up to bid for our revaluation company and we will be starting it in the spring and then it will finalize in 2021.
Which is timed with the end of a bond we're paying, so hopefully I won't pack that in a little, taxes won't trouble.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, vote, motion carries. Article 29, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for the forest fire reserve account. May I have a motion?
I want the chairman to raise $500.
Second.
Motion and a second for $5,000. Questions, comments?
That, whoops, that's a, that continues to build, right?
Right.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty, to see if the town will give appropriate money received from the registrations and fines of dogs to enforce the animal control laws. They have a motion?
Motion passed.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to pass Article thirty. Questions, comments? Okay, none. Uh, whoops, you do have one.
Does Sue Milligan's bill animal control?
Yes.
Sue Milligan is the control officer. Um, okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to charge interest on taxes not paid before a certain date and establish the date and date of interest. The rate of interest, excuse me. Recommended annual rate at eight percent on taxes not paid before September thirtieth and March thirty-first. Second installment payments. They have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Have a, have a motion to, uh, pass Article thirty-one as written, I will say. Because I kind of messed that up. Uh, questions, comments? Yes, Pat, you first.
Eight, eight percent, that's an increase on the interest rate?
Yeah, because this date allowed, allowed us to increase it last year to eight percent and they allowed us eight percent this year.
Okay.
So I just figured we would increase it to the state maximum laws.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that was my question.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-two, to see if the town vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on beta taxes at three percent for the calendar year. They have a motion? So.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Article thirty-two. Questions, comments?
What does that mean?
So if we get an agreement on your taxes and it goes back more than a year and you get three percent on that, we try not to add it up.
That's a place for that. Yeah, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-three, to see what sum of money the town will raise inappropriate for the North Millray Community Church operations. They have a motion?
Make a motion that we raised a thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for a thousand dollars. Questions, comments? Yes?
What's our plan for using the bond?
There is a plan to fix the building. So, um, you just put fifty thousand dollars into the building reserve account, thirty thousand of that's going to go to the North Millray Church to, um, make so much needed repairs. Um, this money goes to getting for the electricity and then anything like incidental that happens there.
Good, but has there been any thought about whether it's going to be rental property or?
Yeah, we've, we've really been more focused on preserving it since we got it this time last year rather than, um, you know, how we're going to use it. I think that there's always been that thought that if somebody was certainly interested in, in how we could better use it, that the board would be willing to have a subcommittee established to talk about that.
Good.
So the town owns the church?
Last year, uh, the association, um, gifted it to the town and the town, uh, made the decision at the town meeting last week.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to accept donations not to exceed five thousand dollars on behalf of the town. They have a motion? So.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Questions? Uh, behind you first, yeah?
Why is there a limit?
Yeah.
So if we didn't have a limit, then we could just said, yeah, let's take the church and then you guys would have had a decision to be made. I think that when, if the gift has strings attached, it makes sense for the town meeting to accept that gift.
So it's more not talking cash, we're talking for?
We're, yeah, we're, I mean, we're talking, a donation could be a building, it could be a car, it could be like a hatch, it could be a bell, seeing that happen. And you don't have a tower for the bell.
If somebody wanted to give more than five thousand cash, would you take it?
We would have to go to town meeting and ask.
Okay.
For, yeah, for.
If this passes.
Yes.
Exactly.
But that's procedure we always use when someone donates.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayment to taxes not yet committed pursuant to thirty-six in the IRS pay five oh cents. They have a motion? So. Have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to allow the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell or dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-filling taxes for not less than the tax costs and interest on that, on the same, and to execute and deliver a quick point D for such property. They have a motion?
Move it past here.
Have a motion in a second, Article thirty-six. Questions? Yes?
Anything besides comments?
So we don't, the next article is that we don't pay for this. No.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Yeah. Opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman on behalf of the town to waive the foreclosure process for delinquent taxes for all quarter share properties in Millray. They have a motion? Move it passes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Article thirty-seven, to pass. Questions, comments? See? Yes?
Yeah, what's the, uh, what is the process? Is it, the town has to, has to refuse to foreclose and so that the association can or how does that work?
It goes to the town first and we wait?
Yes, if, if we did not pass this, then we would be legally, uh, responsible for those quarter share properties and we would be responsible for the HOA fees associated with those quarter share properties. And the town many, many moons ago decided that was not something we were interested in doing, so this has been on the town meeting warrant per, ever.
So this is just a one-year thing we have to keep?
You have to do it every year, yeah.
Yes?
Um, what about other properties that have HOA fees that aren't quarter shares or be?
Yeah, we're, we're blessed, let's face it. Um, people pay their taxes here or at least they pay their taxes before it's going to go to foreclosure.
Okay.
So we haven't been, um, we have not experienced that yet and if that were to come, then I'm sure we, we have a special town meeting asking you to
Okay.
waive those.
Then name up, we have a special town meeting and not exempt it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Article, okay, Article thirty-eight.
Just in his place. Team ballot.
Okay, okay. Read it first, okay. Okay, we're going to do this by, uh, written ballot or secret ballot. Article thirty-eight. To see if the town will vote, oh, consider it, uh, by written ballot to permanently increase the property tax levy limit of one million, three hundred thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars established for the town of Millray by state law in the event that the municipal budget, um, approved under the preceding articles rules out the tax commitment that is greater than the property levy tax number. They have a motion? Thank you. Have a motion in a second for Article thirty-eight. Um, all in favor?
No.
All in favor, go up to written ballot.
Okay.
All in favor?
We have, can we have the discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I need a motion for us, that's all. Motion to go with written ballot, yeah.
Yeah, now we're going to discussion.
In a second, we had a second.
Yeah, okay. So the question is, if what, do we just raise it to whatever we need the number to be for what we, for the money we raised today or is it, is it going, or what is this, this?
This is the property tax levy limit allowed at state.
And that's the levy limit right now based on some?
So next year I use that number and I plug it into the formula and it gives me a percentage and then if we've gone over that, then I have to bring it back to you.
Yes?
What's the mill rate for that data per person?
I don't, I don't know because we don't have anything from the school.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what that figure works out to be as a mill rate, that high figure?
Last year?
What, last year's was ten eighty. I, I'm not anticipating, uh, an increase in the mill rate. If anything, I'm, I'm anticipating a decrease in the mill rate. Um, it really depends on school.
Okay.
So, um, because of yesterday's vote and it looks like we'll break even or see a school reduction.
Okay.
Um, so that makes a big difference.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, for just, yeah.
My, my answer would be, could you explain this? Uh, is that one million, uh, one million, three? Is that what you expect to generate through taxes to properties?
No, 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 no.
Could you explain this, please?
So, um, uh, it would definitely be less than that if we were including our revenues to offset the budget. But our budget is larger than this amount right here. So I have to bring this forward to you to, to vote on it. That's, that's the law. Uh, the state gives you a number and it says you can have two point eight percent, I believe, this year growth over that. Um, and then you can factor in your own growth through the town. Um, and it, it, we, this is the number I came up with and we're about forty-five thousand dollars more than this, so I need to bring it to you for you guys. It just passed all of the, the cash articles for the budget. It, it's more than this number, so I need you to pass this.
And, so you know what the number is?
Yeah, it's, uh, one million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
So it's whatever, whatever we need to, whatever we pass, we raise tonight.
Right.
Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, so just a procedural matter. Uh, I'm going to call for a vote, but this is just to go to written ballot. So if, if you vote to, if you vote on, uh, Article thirty-eight right now, that means we're going to go to a written ballot on thirty-eight. Any questions on that, procedural? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries.
I technically only made three correct votes. Um, but whoever would like to vote on it is on the ballot.
It's a social event, it's easy to.
How did that, how did that die into?
You only hand out three of you. No vote, you don't wish it.
Anybody else? We're good? Free vote. Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
She's very confident.
Well, I would change it.
Okay, Article thirty-nine. To see if the towns will vote to appropriate money received from the registrations of snowmobiles, the municipal snowmobile grant to the Ridge Valley Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining the snowmobile trains. They have a motion?
Move it past here.
Have a motion in a second. Article thirty-nine. Questions, comments? Yes?
Yeah, uh, we, we just, uh, we raised five thousand dollars to, to donate to the snowmobile club in the begging letter article. Is that, is this part of that or just in addition?
No.
This is in addition?
No, this is whatever, whatever we raised for the fees of registering the snowmobiles in, in, um, in the office.
Right.
And that filters through to the, when you got the snowmobile club.
Okay, but we don't take that away from the five thousand that you?
No.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Article forty. Shall the north fence entitled amendment to the fire department ordinance be enacted? They have a motion?
Move it past here.
Have a motion in a second for Article forty to pass. Uh, questions, comments? Yes?
Could the chief give us a twenty-minute executive summary? Sorry, I want the changes. You win. Um, I happen to be the new chief now. Oh, yay! It's just, far as I understand it, is to comply with the town regulation. They've always accepted the chief. Now they got it in writing. Is that right?
So there are a couple of different changes to the ordinances that, that ordinance that was made. Um, one, it changes, um, their voting on chief to a fiscal year, so we would be in compliance with the credit system count. Um, and it also, uh, establishes the officers in the ordinance where before it was only in their SOPs, that there was a training officer, um, and secretary, a captain, that was not in the ordinance originally and that the, that the chief and assistant chief were report to the slot. Those are the major changes to the ordinance.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Yeah. Opposed? Motion carries. Article forty-one. They have a motion to, um, pass Article forty-one, and written? Article, would you like me to read it? The motion, the fact as written. And I have a second now. I will just appear on that page and just will bring your attention to the, uh, the step, the explanation in italics down below. That might help. I have a motion in a second. Questions, comments?
This ordinance is the unified development order?
Yes.
So we got a unified order.
Everyone have a chance to read it? One more time? Okay, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article forty-two, shall the, shall the ordinance entitled and ordinance amendment propose rots management district next of the unified development review ordinance of the town of Millray being enacted? They have a motion? Move it past forty-two.
Second.
Have a motion in a second and, uh, but, by the way, there's a handout out back if you didn't get it. Questions, comments? Yes?
What's, what's in it that's changing? Anything?
So we have a, we have a neighborhood that has two diff- that's in two different zones. And it came to our attention because somebody built, somebody built too close to the, um, hand line property.
Yep.
Um, if their house was the next lot, they'd be fine. When you look at the, you know, so we're kind of backing into this, but when you look at the whole thing, it makes perfect sense that the entire neighborhood ought to be in the same development district. This puts the whole neighborhood in the same development district and also cleans up a little bit of a mess for the, for the gentleman who built. He's like within ten feet of what the board.
So they didn't have to move out?
We were working on that. We were working on that. It was, it was really, it was interesting because it just, the guy was, I don't believe the guy did it in his coming sin and, you know, I'll just do this and beg for forgiveness. I think it was a clear mistake and when he went to sell it, he found out. When it was brought to us, it just, it just makes a lot of sense. So that's why it's a Friday night.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other decisions? Okay.
Can I ask a question for a second?
Yes.
I'm confused. Since we changed our fiscal year, why do we, why are we having our meeting now rather than having it in June when we might have numbers? Better numbers to look at.
So we talked about this last year. We talked about this a lot.
We talked about this a lot.
We have talked about this a lot. Historically, you get way better participation in March than you do in June. Or in May when...
What's that based on?
It's based on the last time we had our town meeting. May 8th, we had about this many people, maybe fewer, at the May 8th, 2017 town meeting that established our fiscal year budget for 17, 18. So we've typically had a really good turnout in, in March at this time of year. I think this is the lowest I've ever seen and maybe it's because it's early. Maybe we should have it at 7 and 6.
No, I think people didn't really know what was going on.
But you break the cycle of time to get that much, scheduled to get that much.
But most, most towns that have a, a June to June fiscal year have their budgets somewhere in because as it is now, you can't really tell how much money you're going to spend in this year. We got five months to go.
So because most of our costs are fixed. We have contracts, we don't have a public works department. We pay, the only big variable we, we have is the transfer station. That, if, if that doesn't impact our budget typically. If we had our own public works department, it, it would. It, it would make a big difference. It would mean, yeah, we need to have a meeting in May or June because with winners like this, when, let's just say, we got a deal from cost issue regardless of how the bill was applied because there's no way we could have done it for $119,000 if we had our own public works department. And that's, and we certainly could talk about it again and have a town meeting in May or June.
I think a piece of it is tradition, but it's always been March. Certainly a piece of why we continue.
Well, we voted to change fiscal year, so you think we vote to change things.
But the other town, I mean, as Andrew was saying, the stuff that we can control happens tonight. The school in the county, which you know, we have a lot of control, happens down, whether we met in June or now, that number's not going to change. So we can't set our tax rate until we get those, which is... The other, the other thing that's nice about being early is we're voting once. If stuff gets turned down, we get time to react. You know, I mean, we, before we were voting on money we could already spend. So it's nice to be in front of it, you know, then...
Well, we, we probably wouldn't hold our meeting in August or September if we ended the end of June. So we wouldn't be in a situation where we have to vote or to agree to go ahead and spend money before we vote again.
Alan, did you have a question?
Well, I thought originally it was going to start at 6:30 and I happened to call and found out it was going to start at 6:00. So that's why we probably ain't got the turnout we should have.
All right, is there not one up here?
Well, maybe this is certainly a light turnout historically tonight, but I would suggest that the hall is probably more comfortable in March than it is in June and that might affect our turnout as well.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a motion to, yes, Congress.
I'm going to reiterate what Steve says. I mean, on levels, as a resident, as an employee in the town, I would appreciate if it's looked at on a year-by-year basis about moving town meeting to, what, June?
Yeah, so I think you said to take that into advisement. You're going to talk about it.
You don't mean, you don't mean deciding for you. You mean pick a date and that's our date going forward.
I'm sorry?
You said year by year, but I think you mean we're going to pick a date and that's our date going forward.
Well, I mean, let's revisit it. Here, not, it, it's just, it, it takes one more election away so we can hold our town election on the same day as the election in June. It just, it's just my, my thought here.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
No, I'm rushing this.
I think it's, I think I'm ready to adjourn.
You're very good.
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor of adjourned at 6:58 PM?
All right, good job.
Move it here.